Wednesday, October 7th, 2020, 1:00 PM. Zoom teleconference meeting, an executive order to revoke participation. These orders are on Governor Baker and Thursday last 12, 2020, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. As chairman, I hereby call the meeting to order. Roll call. Commissioner Collins.
President.
Commissioner Shea.
President.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien is present. The minutes of the open session meeting of September 30th, 2020.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we accept the minutes of the open session meeting of September 30th, 2020 for approval.
Second.
Motion made in second to accept the open session meeting of September 30th, 2020 for approval. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is a vote. We have the minutes of the executive session meeting of September 23rd, 2020. What's the wish of the board?
I'll make the motion, Mr. Chairman, that we accept the minutes of the executive session meeting of September 23rd, 2020 for approval and that they not be released at this time until the mayor is adjudicated.
I'll second the motion.
As the motion made in second, the minutes of the executive session meeting of September 23rd, 2020 be hereby approved and not to release the contents until a future date. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is a vote. Is there any public comment today? Hearing no public comment. Go get into the building, John McGowan, please.
Good afternoon, Commissioners.
Good afternoon, John.
I'm still working on the courtroom's plexiglass petitions throughout the county, actually. We finished up courtroom 20 in Superior Court Monday, and I sent the crew down the Stoughton Courthouse. We finished courtroom, I think it's a juvenile court. Juvenile court on first. We finished that, and presently working on Superior Court, courtroom 3, and courtroom 10. We're very fortunate to have Joe back. He's doing all the material there and fabricating the stuff for that courtroom. We met this morning, I'm sure Mike will tell you about it, the director. We met with the state. We're going to have the state come in and help us out with the courtrooms in District Court, which is five of them altogether. And hopefully we've got that done by Saturday, and we're looking pretty, we're in pretty good shape for the court to open up, to do their business in their timeframe. I think it's sometime next week. And all we'll have left is probably different judges want different, they might want us to have it move something or, you know, just fix it in a different way, which we can handle. It shouldn't be any problem to have it done. And I think we're in good shape on our end, anyway. That's about all I got going right now.
Okay, thank you. Good report, John. I know you guys are doing a great job. Commissioner Collins, any comments?
Nice, nice job, John.
Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Shea.
I'm all set right now, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. Appointments, we have none. Old business? Anything, Director Mullin?
No, 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 Mr. Chairman, we do not have any old business.
All right, thank you. Personnel matters, we have four from the Aggie School, and we have two from the Registered Deeds, one for an upgrade motion, and one for an appointment. I await a motion from the board to accept the group papers.
I'll make a motion that we accept the proposed personnel matters for today's meeting. That's four items in the agricultural school, three rate increases, and an appointment of an athletic director, and then two items at the registry, as you said, notice of a promotion of Margaret Brennan, and an appointment of a senior clerk.
Second.
Motion made in second to accept the personnel papers as presented by, to the board, four from the Aggie School and two from the Registered Deeds. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? It is a vote. We have the expense warrants for payment. I have a motion.
I'll have a motion in one minute. I just looked at them in my packet. Here we go. Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we accept the following payroll and expense warrants dated October 7th, 2020. Motion approved. County expense warrant in the amount of $58,909.09. A county weekly payroll warrant in the amount of $142,329.82. An agricultural school biweekly payroll in the amount of $347,350.21. Motion approved.
Second.
There's a motion made in second that we approve the county expense warrants on October 7th, 2020, as presented by Commissioner Shea. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is a vote. Bit openings, we have none. Contracts award, we have none. We have for the August 2020 trial balance approval.
Yes, I can, yes, I can, I can thank you, Chairman. We do have, we do have the August, we do have the August trial balance for your approval. I get, oh, you know, like everything, like everything is in place, you know, like there's nothing out of order at, oh, you know, like at this, oh, you know, oh, you know, like at this moment, like as, like as we, like as we mentioned in the July, as you mentioned in, I'm in the July trial balance, we did have like a number of expenses in July, which are, you know, like a lot of front expenses, which we, oh, you know, like as I, as I mentioned, will level out, like as we go forward, you know, like in, like in the, I'm in the August balance, you know, like it does reflect those expenses, you know, however, we are very sure that it will level out, like in all our revenues are on point and right where they need to be at this time.
Okay, the chair will await a motion to accept the August 2020, 2020 trial balance as presented by Joe D'Orio for approval.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we accept the August 2020 trial balance for approval, as submitted by the treasurer.
Second.
There's a motion made in second to approve the August 2020 trial balance for approval as presented by the Assistant Treasurer. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is a vote. The next thing on the agenda is another county relief funding community action grant proposals. We always see they copy of the different proposals, and I believe they do want to look down at three, and I believe that speaking for the recommendations will be the Assistant Director, please.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, of the Commissioners, thank you. As you just mentioned, we had gotten all of the applications to the Commissioners, and we adjudicated upon them, and I just want to very briefly go over the criterion we used, and just as a piece of background, Director Mullin and Toleskix and I have been working with the Bureau of Justice Assistance.
Excuse me for a minute, I'm sorry, I should have introduced you as Bill Buxtry, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate it. So, yeah, so Director Mullin, in his effort as a county as well to always be seeking out grants and opportunities for the county to leverage federal and state funds, was able to partner with the Bureau of Justice Assistance through the help of the Commissioners to have this grant opportunity. And working closely with them, we developed a criterion which, with which to adjudicate the applications. We looked to see if the applications provided a clear description of services provided, and if that, if that, those services were linked specifically to COVID-19 first responder testing, domestic violence prevention and response efforts, public and behavioral health needs, and other justice slash public safety, community response, and stabilization efforts within the county. We asked the applicants to give us a time, phase, milestone, plan of action for implementation for the grants, which included clearly stated accomplishment metrics and some as defined by the proposal. We asked that the organization integrated budget line items into the proposal and provided a clear explanation of the impact this funding would have, and we asked ourselves, does this organization have a significant scope of services within, provided within Norfolk County, and to individuals and communities, and does the grant application promote permissible use of the funds as outlined by the federal grant application? So, as the chairman said, we received five applications, and the recommend, my recommendation is as follows. Dove, the domestic violence ended program, presented a strong, comprehensive application, which clearly described the multitude of services it provided, linking them with the stated scope of the grant, in this case, domestic violence, and provided a clear line item budget. Dove produced a 36-week plan to utilize these funds principally for additional staffing necessitated by the pandemic, and gave an estimation of the number of clients and client visits that would be possible with the funding. The organization has a large Norfolk County footprint, and a strong, and the grant strongly supports its underlying mission, but we graded that very strong and recommended to award the grant an amount requested. The Manet Community Health Center's application explained how the Community Health Center would leverage funds for personal protective equipment and provide COVID-19 testing for first responders, frontline workers, and the general public. The application successfully showed that Manet would leverage grant funds to further its public health mission in the air of COVID-19 and serve the citizens of Norfolk County. A line item budget was furnished and tangible metrics of success could be discerned. Their application grade was strong, and the recommendation of mine was to award the amount requested. The Walpole Fire Department's application explained how the department has worked in tandem with the Walpole Police Department of Massachusetts Correction Institution to start to public health emergencies within the town of Walpole and at MCI Cedar Junction, formerly known as Walpole Prison. It detailed the need to reopen a second fire station to keep crews separate and minimize the possibility of cross infection among fire groups, as well as the increased toll on vehicles due to the greater, greatly heightened number of ambulance runs. The application successfully showed that WFD would leverage grant funds to respond to public safety needs of citizens of a community within Norfolk County. Their application was graded strong, and their recommendation was to award the amount requested. Quindi Community Action Programs Incorporated provides vital services to address hunger within eastern Norfolk County. Their application proposed funding salaries and fringe benefits of staff who supported the core mission of addressing hunger and food insecurity, which while admirable and vital work, unfortunately is not covered within the scope of the grant, so we graded the application outside of the scope and respectfully deny, my recommendation is to respectfully deny the amount requested. And finally, the Live Life Now Foundation does seek to address domestic violence, which is within the scope of the grant, but does so primarily through addressing food insecurity of survivors through the production of care packages, as well as the cash gift card assistance. The cash gift cards are problematic for grant compliance and tracking purposes, and the majority of those served by the foundation have traditionally resided outside of Norfolk County, so we graded them outside of the scope slash county, and recommended that we respectfully deny the amount requested and refer them to Plymouth County for possible further CARES Act funding from another source. And, give me a moment, let me just pull up. So, again, we looked at the three, we had three awardees that fit within the criterion, and it's important to note that Director Mullin had reached out through the Norfolk County Managers List serve to every community of the 28 communities, cities and towns within Norfolk County, to make them aware of this grant application on behalf of the Commissioners, as well as make them, ask them to think of other community service organizations within their communities, and these were the five we received. So, Director Mullin did a great deal of diligence in publicizing this grant, and so the financial overview would be $14,502 for Dove, $11,000 were requested by Manet, $8,435 were requested by the Walpole Fire Department, for a total of $33,955, which leaves 24,053 remaining of the $58,008 in grant money. And we hope to, by working with the Bureau of Justice Assistance, repurpose the final amount for courthouse COVID-19 response efforts, specifically probably air purifiers, but it creates an additional opportunity for the county to deliver on one of its core missions of justice and community access to justice. So, with that, through you, Mr. Chairman, if the Commissioners have any questions, I also have the motion in front of me that is proposed.
All right. Comments, Commissioner Collins?
Yeah, I'd like to thank everyone that was on the team looking at the proposals. I know it was a lot of work, so thank you very much for doing that. And, Bill, that was a very nice presentation. I'll pass it over to Joe.
Thank you, Commissioner.
All right, Commissioner Shea.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I enjoyed this process because I do believe this hits right to the core of what we should be doing regional-wise, county-wise, and just in every way-wise. I was encouraged that five different entities applied and three passed the muster, so to speak, and I have no problem with any of these three. And I think you just touched on it, Bill, at the end of your presentation. The remaining amount of money, we're going to recontact law enforcement of people, or people that we think is within the scope, or do you already have a place in mind to do it? I don't want to let, I don't want to let any of this money go back to Uncle Sam, unused.
Three, Mr. Chairman, correct. The, the goal would be to utilize this, to repurpose it for the ongoing work we're doing in courthouses now, with obviously the great, it falls within the Bureau of Justice Assistance's for the grant, but also, as you know from Director McGowan's updates, these, there have been a number of quite costly things we've had to do to courthouses and things we still have to do, so this money will allow us to continue that mission and kind of defray the cost as well. So, we're still working on that piece. I'm sure that will come before you in the coming weeks, but I think I can speak for Director Mullin, and all of us are saying you're correct, we don't want to give any, anything back to.
Right, yeah. I mean, you know, it takes, takes a little outreach on our part, I mean, kudos to everyone that wrote these grants, and we've had a long history, certainly with the Walpole Fire Department, and all, actually, we've had a long history with Dove. I know every year they be for us, again, looking for assistance, and we've, you know, we've done the best we can in these tough times, but I'm sure all of this is more than, more than needed and necessary.
So, I'm ready, Mr. Chairman, to make a motion if there are no other questions.
Okay, just the comments from the chairman, that I have read all of the recommendations and the, the applications, and yes, we do, we did have a lawyer along with Dove, which is a great organization in domestic violence, but I'd like to comment to Director Mullin and to the Assistant Director for job well done, and the chair will await a motion from Commissioner Shea.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that the Norfolk County Commissioners recommend that Corona, coronavirus relief funding for the following grant, grantees. Subgrants to Dove in the amount of $11,502, Manet Community Health Center, $11,000, and the Walpole Fire Department in the amount of $8,453, and to proceed in establishing grant agreements between the county and set entities for the purpose of this grant.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, there's a motion made in second to approve the recommendations of the Director for approval of the Norfolk County Coronavirus Relief Funding Community Action Grant as they presented and as proposed by Commissioner Shea. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is a vote. Thank you, and thank the vote for a well job well done.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Appreciate it, Chairman, thank you.
You're welcome. The next thing we have is the execution of an energy management service agreement for Norfolk County Aggie High School on my hopes up.
Yes, like if I could, Mr. Chairman, you know, for the last, you know, for basically the last three years, we, you know, have been working with the Aggie School, you know, like we've been working with our, with our partner, Kirsage Energy, and we've been working with the town of Walpole and Walpole residents. Like, can, can we do have, like, can we do have on with us Andrew Bernstein, you know, who's, you know, who's the managing partner of Kirsage? Oh, you know, can I, can I, oh, you know, I can, I'm, I'm happy to outline the provisions of the agreement, however, however, like I, I did want to give Andrew a chance, you know, to just really comment on exactly, oh, exactly where we are and where we've been as well, and, oh, you know, like, and I think how excited we are at him.
Okay, so, is he, is he online?
Yes, he is, Chairman, yes, Andrew.
Okay, mark them aboard, would you like to say his words and bring us up to date?
Sure. Excuse me, thank you. First of all, I want to thank everyone for support. Kirsage, we've been doing solar since the beginning of the program in Massachusetts. We're one of the larger developers on the northeast. We've done north of now about 150 megawatts, and we own and operate, but this project has been a little bit more challenging than some of the others. But I want to thank everyone sincerely, and also recognize Mike and team, and Scott Lopez as well, who spent a lot of extra hours and time working together, and it shouldn't be this challenging. I'm quite surprised that Walpole has not been more for this since it's a green project, the benefits for the agricultural school, for the county, excuse me, and for Walpole are quite clear. So, we're in good shape across the board right now. We are going to start the roofs. We've got the equipment coming in, we'll start the roofs tomorrow, we'll start the canopy in two weeks. The challenge has been, these have been the smallest projects. There has been, the roofs are, some of them are not in as good shape, so we had to delay three roofs until next year until they were repaired, but the benefits are going to be quite clear for the agricultural school in terms of energy savings, and then the ground mounts are just great projects. They'll have battery storage on them, they'll be good for climate change, they'll be good in generating energy, the credits off those projects, because the Aggie School and the county really don't need any more energy savings, so the energy credits, if you will, that are generated by those projects will be then sold to other municipalities, probably mostly within Norfolk County, as well as low and moderate income off-takers. So, it's kind of a nice win across the board, and we feel good about this, and as I said, Mike and team have gone way overboard. I'd probably speak to Mike a fair amount at 7:30 in the morning and 7:00 at night, just going over issues. So, I want to thank the Commissioners too, because I know this has been a political issue, but I think that Kirsage, our reputation is critical, and we're going to work with Walpole, we'll work with the Butters, of course, as Mike and team, to make sure that we've got proper screening, and we've said that from day one, and it's, it should be an innocuous project. And then finally, one other project that we're working on, which the Aggie School, we're working to do, if you will, a parking lot canopy to provide a new animal barn for them. So, we'll put up the roof, it will put solar on the roof, and then they'll have a facility that they can then use to keep the cows and some of the other animals and pigs underneath a new facility. So, it could be a complete win-win, and we're working along with Eversource, which has lengthened the process. So, thank you again.
Oh, thank you very much, and we appreciate all the efforts of you and your company, and of course, Scott Lopez, this has been going on for almost three years now, and we also commend Mike and Bill for their effort, and is there anyone online from the Aggie School that would like to say a couple words?
I should just, I don't know if anyone's on from the Aggie School, but I should also say that Tammy and Rick Fitzpatrick have been terrific to working this out, and it's been very challenging in this COVID-19 world figuring out the timing. So, the Aggie School, I should have mentioned them from the start, has also been great partners. I don't know if anyone's online, but.
Yeah, I'm here from the school, thank you. Mr. Chairman, through you, yeah, I can't say enough.
Yeah, go ahead, Greg.
I, you know, I guess I'm the guy that everybody can point the finger on, can point the finger at, if this project doesn't go well, but I'll take all the credit if it goes well, because, you know, we were the ones that initiated this way back when, when it brought it to the attention of the county Commissioners at a meeting, and you very appropriately saw to it that this item didn't fall to the wayside, and I appreciate that to Mr. Chairman in specifics. You made sure it didn't fall to the wayside, you got it on the agenda as often as it could be, and that really helped us keep, keep folks engaged. We were feeling tremendous pressure from folks here at the school to get this thing off the ground. I would, I would say that Andrew showed probably more patience in this whole project than I ever imagined anybody could, so, you know, I thank him for that as well, but we're looking forward to this project getting off the ground. I know the students and the staff, we will bring them up to date on a weekly basis as to kind of, you know, the weak look ahead. We had a nice meeting this morning with the contractors on site, they are very amenable to what's going on here, and I think although they probably would have desired to get the project off the ground a couple days ago, I think the time that they've had to mobilize here on campus has afforded them the ability to kind of look at what really goes on here from the point of view that how often students are moving around, so I think that'll be helpful for them, for them to understand, you know, how safe we have to be when this project is up and running, and I will say that the site, the location that they've set up for their equipment and such, looks very neat, they fenced it in, it looks very good, so we're excited, we're looking forward to this project going forward. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, Commissioner Collins, your comments?
Nice job, everyone.
All right, thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Shea.
I do have a couple of comments. In my, in my one term here, which I started a few months early due to the resignation of Commissioner Gillis, I started in 16, and I was able to start, so I had a five-year run here. As soon as I came.
Do it all time and I'll judge, Commissioner.
I'm sorry?
You're an old timer now.
Yeah, I'm an old timer. Well, let me tell you, this old timer knows more about cable, I mean, more about solar now than I ever dreamed a
That's great.
a layman could possibly do. I also know that it wasn't always a smooth ride, and it probably still isn't. However, every meeting that we attended, if it was re-discussed, it was on the agenda at the Aggie School meetings. It's on the agenda. We have a meeting today. We spoke to anybody and everybody that was interested or had anything to say about solar. This included residents, it included parents, it included experts, it included a lot of the staff who were particularly pushing part. However, if we didn't have the team that you put together, Mr. Chairman, including, starting with Frank, and then going over to Mike and Bill and Scott Lopez and Rick and Tammy, would never get this to this point. It was tedious, but we're following the general law. We're doing everything that we think is, possibly can be done to make sure that it's done in the proper manner and that it will benefit everyone. I believe the biggest impact of this is that students, in addition to the revenue, that students learn how to embrace solar, install solar, know about it, and I believe it'll lead to other new green projects. And I think with the acres that we have there, it can be done safely and tastefully, and I think it'll benefit everyone. But it was not done lightly or without all sorts of due diligence. And I hope we don't have to pay all the legal bills at one time. But this is just, we're near the final steps, but we're going closer, and this is just another part of the puzzle, and it's a big day. So I'm happy to support it. But I remember originally talking to Chairman Little, Ed Little, and he had doubts about solar. He had doubts about the look of it. And I did too. But, you know, it took a while. It took a little convincing. But I think it's the way to go. And I think to plug the students into them and make them a part of it makes it much more tolerable and much more important. So I'm happy to support it. And I think everyone did a great
All right, thank you, Commissioner. I believe we had made a temporary motion or temporary agreement motion. Director Mullen, do we need a motion on this?
Yes, like, you know, that I want to be very clear, that the agreement in front of you is for the rooftops at the Aggie. Like, I think everyone is aware, there are, you know, there are a number of components and parts to this project. And, oh, you know, like, and there is a ground mount, oh, you know, part of the project as well. Like, and we will, oh, you know, like, oh, you know, like, I believe mid next month, we will actually be holding a public hearing as it relates, you know, to the ground mount portions. Like, however, like, in terms of what is in, in terms of what is in front of you this afternoon, like, actually, two weeks ago, on the 23rd of September, the county Commissioners approved a pro forma. Oh, you know, like, in the agreement in front of, in the agreement in front of you, the agreement in front of you today for the execution, you know, like, oh, you know, is actually very specific to the rooftops. Oh, you know, like, oh, you know, if I could, Mr. Chairman, ask for, you know, like, a motion to approve the agreement, you know, like, I meant to have, I meant to have, to have the county Commissioners authorize the chairman to execute.
Okay, Commissioner Shea, will you make a motion on that?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that the county, we approve for the county of Norfolk, the Energy Management Service Agreement for solar guaranteed onsite energy generation for the rooftops at Norfolk County Agriculture School.
And I think your motion would be to have the chair sign. Is that right, Joe?
And the chair to sign for the Commission.
Okay, I'll second the motion.
Okay, there's a motion made by Commissioner Shea, seconded by Commissioner Collins to approve the recommendation by the Director and to authorize on the solar program at the Aggie School and to authorize the chairman on their behalf to sign said document. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, it is a vote. Thank you, and thank you very much for coming out.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. We have, next is the report of the IT Director. Do you want to bring us up to date, Mark? Good afternoon, Commissioners. Yes, I just wanted to mention a few of the
projects that I'm currently working on. First is the workstation replacement project. Over the past couple of months, I've replaced all the users' workstations from Windows 7 machines to Windows 10. I think that I have one machine left to do. That should be completed within the next couple of weeks. And I've tried to do this all on nights and weekends for the most part, just to limit the work interruption and also to kind of adhere to the social distancing guidelines. Another project that I'm working on is part two of our backup system upgrade. We just received in a new Unitrends device, which will be used to backup all the county data, including maintenance, treasurer's office, engineering, and the county office. It has the capability of both backing up all the data to the device as well as a, another copy will be backed up to the cloud as a storage area for worst-case scenarios. And it will also be done with a focus on security of the data. This is the second part of this backup system upgrade. We implemented months ago a backup device that is primarily for email. So at this point in time, we are, we keep a backup copy of every incoming and outgoing email into the county. And that is done on a secure device, so that is protected from any kind of malicious incidences as well. Another project that's coming up, which is a big one, is we're in the early stages of upgrading the phone system. We are, we are a couple of layers behind on the latest software. So we are going to the most recent software, which requires us to replace all of the hardware as well. We've gotten in a proposal for this work, which I've shared with Director Mullins, and we should be cutting a PO to get this paid for, and it should be probably implemented within the next month to a month and a half. And the final project that I want to bring up is the, we are upgrading the conference room to be able to handle video conferencing, Zoom meetings. We are getting in a device from Poly Studio. It's an all-in-one device that has camera, microphones, and a touchpad control. We will also be getting a roll-in cart and likely a 55-inch TV screen. So we'll be able to move that in and out of the conference room in order to have the Commissioners' meetings within the conference room. Now, that equipment has been ordered. I got a, I got confirmation that it shipped out today, or most of the aspects of it shipped out today. So I would expect that I will pick up the TV this weekend, and my hope is that we'll have it up and running for next week's Commissioners' meeting.
Thank you very much for that good report. Any comments or suggestions, Commissioner Collins?
Mike, it's nice, it's nice to see you, and thank you for your hard work. Much appreciated.
Sure, thank you.
And Commissioner Shea?
I have a couple of quick questions and, and comments. Mark, a couple of weeks ago at an agricultural school meeting, we were, the meeting was, I don't know if you call it hacked, I don't know the right term, by some outside people, instant off-color comments were made, as I recall, and someone was able to get them off of there. But is this, I'm reading in the paper that it's happened at other school committees and other public meetings. Is this the coming trend, or is this something that we can, we can avoid or hopefully keep under control? I don't know much about it technically speaking. But it is disconcerting, and, you know, I was curious about it. And since you're here, I wanted to ask you that question. I have one more question after this.
Sure. Yeah, it's been happening in, you know, a number of places. It's happened at a couple of school meetings. My daughter's school, actually, in Westwood there, their Zoom meeting was hacked. I'm not sure. I haven't seen anything as to how this is being done other than people, you know, not keeping secure the, you know, the meeting links or passwords or IDs to get into these meetings. And if, if you're not careful with who sees this information, they can easily just jump in.
Okay.
So I can do some more research into
Well, as long as we're aware of it. I mean, again, I read it myself. I read it in the Patriot Ledger, and around the south shore, it's been happening quite a bit.
Yeah.
But we experienced it very briefly a couple of meetings ago. And I think it was the Aggie meeting. I could be wrong. Could have been, could have been some other meeting. But I know it was in the county context.
Certainly, if there's a way that, if I can find out a way to prevent it, that would be a fantastic thing to implement, not only for us, but to pass that info on to others.
Yeah. And another question, it may not be for you, it might be for the Director. Keeping costs down or trying to keep control of costs, and all this costs money, I'm sure. And, you know, some of it was in this budget. If any of it is extra, is, are we eligible for any reimbursement? Does anyone know? Do you know, Mark, or does Director Mullen know? Can we, can we put this in the CARES Act or into virus reimbursement?
That I don't know, to be honest.
Yeah, I mean, like, oh, you know, like, oh, you know, like, in terms of the webcams, in terms, I mean, in terms of the laptops that, oh, you know, we have purchased, you know, to help, oh, you know, to help deal with the, oh, your whole pandemic, yes. So those things are reimbursable. Oh, you know, I can, in terms of the updates, in terms of the updates for the conference room, you know, these, like, actually, like, updates we actually started talking about in January, oh, like, these updates that, like, anticipated, you know, it can be, it can be, oh, you know, like, because, oh, you know, I can, I can be, and because the updates we're talking about, I anticipated, I, you know, I don't think it would be fair to apply for CARES Act funding. Oh, you know, I mean, like, you know, I mean, instead, it's really par for the course, you know, of what we should be having and what we should be doing in the county.
Right.
I hope that helps.
Well, I realize that we should have been doing some of this, you know, and it's good to move forward, not go backward. And I don't think we'll be going back.
Yep.
But the fact of the matter is, a lot of this is brought on by the virus and
Oh, yeah.
having to change our ways and not meeting in person, et cetera, et cetera. Again, you know, it's, it's been a learning process. But I was just looking for a way of finding it, that's all. I have no other
No, I hear you.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, could I ask one more thing?
Yes.
Mark, we have a meeting today at 3 o'clock with the Aggie. Would it be possible, possible for you to just reach out to Rick Fitzpatrick before the meeting, just to see if there's anything he can do to tighten up the Zoom meeting?
Sure.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Okay, thank you, Mark. Thank you, Commissioner Collins. Report of the county director was coming a lot, so you shouldn't have too much to revoke, the right stuff.
Yes, like, I do have, like, a few quick updates. We continue to work on the Old River Place issue. Like, actually, like, earlier this morning, Joe McNichols and I, like, actually, with a project engineer, who is going to be working with us on that project, you know, like, and we should, and we should have a notice into the Gettum Conservation Commission, you know, which will, which will allow us, you know, to response, to responsibly deal with that issue, you know, hopefully, hopefully in the next month and a half to two months. And then, and then, and then also, like, and then also, in terms of the operations review, the committee met, actually, last Wednesday, and there is a recommendation that we hope, that we hope, that we hope to come before the Commissioners next week. Like, and the group will be, the group will be recommending the Abrahams Group, you know, to do the, you know, to do the, you know, to do the operations review, you know, like, and that whole project is very exciting. It'll probably, it'll probably take, it'll probably take about five or six months. And we're hoping, and we're hoping to begin, and we're hoping to begin that project in the next few weeks. And with that, that is all I have this week, Mr. Chairman. And as you note, we do have an executive session on the agenda.
Okay, the Chair will await a motion for executive session. Commissioner Shea?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we go into executive session under Mass General Laws, dealing with executive sessions, pursuant to purpose three, which is to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, specifically asked me Council 93 Local 2417 Maintenance Unit, in that the Chair has declared that open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the Commissioners, and that the Chair so declared.
I'll second the motion.
For purposes of adjournment only.
Yeah, I'll second it.
Okay, in the, we will return to open session, but we will not have any votes, is that right?
Right, adjournment only.
Okay, on the executive session, Commissioner Collins?
Yes.
Commissioner Shea?
Yes.
And Commissioner O'Brien, both yes. We are now in executive session.
All right, just one